What is that in the folder?
It's in the -- I'm going to give it to you when you need it.
All right, let's start the -- thank you very much. The business meeting for the ZBA, June 4th, 2013. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being tape-recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. All righty, folks. Finance report.
Okay. I'm going to do it. I think they gave you the expense line item sheet first. We have 7253, and that is all going to be spent on the remainder of the phone bills. So we have up until April, we'll get May and June. And even if they're, say, more than what we're spending now, we're spending anywhere between 28 and 32. Even if both months are 33, we'll still have enough. If one came in higher, I will not have to encumber funds. I just talked to Mary today. She got automatically within come out of the revolving account.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we're done. We'll be good for our expense. New expense line item. On the revolving account, the last additions were from 429 to 526. The deposit for Thurlow Street revolving hours, as you can see, were -- you can look at the description there and see. The last hearing, I had to go through that DVD a couple of times. It took a while because we had overlap in talking, and it was hard to -- And then there's the legal ad for Thurlow Street that we took a piece of. And then we still have -- we're still -- we still took in more than we spent the first time in 11, 12 years. In business, I have your -- I didn't attach the Noonans, but I emailed them both at the same time. But I did attach Prospect in case you needed it tonight.
Oh, okay.
So I just need a motion if you guys.
Just on Noonans or separate?
On both, on both.
What's the -- what's the address for Noonans?
Unless --
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, they're both.
I just don't know what the address is. Did you just say the date?
269 Central. Sorry.
269.
I should have put it in the front page.
Central. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes dated from May 7th through 2013 for 269 Central Street.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Wait a minute, Jeff moved it and Gina.
Yeah, right. Good point.
I made a motion. I didn't wait for Paula to suggest it. Do we have to -- I read those, but I did not read the Prospect Street, so to be honest with you.
Do you want to --
Well, can I -- can we just --
Want to hold off?
I think I'll abstain from that. Or we'll -- can we vote on it next month, once we've gotten through this? This meeting minutes of this hearing? Of the continued hearing? I mean, essentially, we haven't.
We're voting on 269 Central, the Noonans.
Oh, no.
Doing separate ones?
No, we all voted on that one. I'm talking about 36 Prospect.
You're talking about the next one.
Yep, 36 Prospect. We've already -- we voted on the Noonans one.
Oh, you're putting them separate, okay.
Yeah.
That's what you asked me to do, right? Keep them separate. I thought you did.
No.
Okay, never mind.
Just the minutes of all the minutes.
I said 269 Central, so those have been approved.
Okay. 269 Central.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, the hearing's not over, so we could just approve them once the hearing.
Yeah, we'll approve 36 Prospect later.
Okay.
I don't know what other reading to do.
Hi.
I have to sound everything out.
Yes, okay.
It's okay, you can sit here. It's fine. We're just having a business meeting first.
We're just doing business right now.
So we're doing --
Are you agreeing?
So we approved the minutes. Rules of procedure.
Now, that was something Jeff probably had me put on.
What's that?
Do we need to do anything to postpone approving the minutes for 36?
No, we'll just put them on the next agenda.
I want to Patty to -- The reason the rules of procedure are on here is because I had suggested, to Patty, that we take a look at a case that was ruled upon by the Supreme Court back in December 2011 and has been analyzed by a lot of different folks regarding changes to existing nonconforming one and two-family structures. And the reason this is relevant is because we changed our bylaws, or, excuse me, not the bylaws. We changed our rules of procedure a few years back to take a look at how we review those applications. And we specifically say in here that if you create a new nonconformity, that a variance is required. So what I did was I just printed this out. There's a lot of other analysis if you Google Gale versus Gloucester. But basically, this was a case that sort of set the tone for how these should be reviewed. And I highlighted relevant pieces of this analysis in the bottom. Is it okay if I just read through this, Patty?
Yeah.
I think a few sentences here. Basically, this goes on, talking about pre-existing nonconforming one and two-family structures and how you go through the process of asking to make changes to them. "In the recent holding in Gale versus Zoning Board of Appeals of Gloucester confirms the review framework for any alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change for pre-existing nonconforming one or two-family home. First, the ZBA, in our case, identifies particular ways that the existing single- or two-family home does not comply with the current zoning bylaws or ordinance." That's exactly what we do, actually, in our -- that's the first step that we clearly delineate in our rules of procedure. "Next, we determine whether the proposed alteration or addition would intensify the existing nonconformities or create any additional ones." That's also the very next thing that we do. So we're actually doing a good job of outlining that so far. If the answer is no, in other words, if the alteration or addition would not intensify the existing nonconformity or create any new ones, then a special permit or a simple finding could authorize the issuance of a permit to the applicant. So if you make those findings, then they can either get their special permit or maybe no special permit is necessary. In our particular bylaws, it specifically says, "No special permit shall be required if we make that finding." So in our case, it would just be a finding, which is also consistent with our rules of procedure. Otherwise, if the answer is yes, in other words, if we do think that it is, in fact, intensifying the existing nonconformity, then the ZBA must proceed to make a further determination about whether the proposed change, extension, or alteration will or not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. If it is not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure, then a special permit or other designated approval can be issued to the applicant. Okay? Again.
Even if you're increasing the --
Now --
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, even if you're increasing the nonconformity, as long as it's not more detrimental, we can issue a special permit. All that sounds familiar because it's what we've been doing. The next paragraph, though, and what's unique about this Gale case, is that the Gale Court further held that provided that the applicant can proceed under either scenario, then a variance is not required under the local zoning bylaw ordinance, as was originally alluded to in dicta from prior case. So basically, in our rules of procedure, we specifically say that if you create any new nonconformity, then you have to have a variance. What this ruling says is, no, the ZBA, for existing nonconforming, single, and two-family structures, if you make these, follow this procedure, they can be modified basically any way they want, provided this board makes the determination that whatever the change is, is not substantially more detrimental. And if we make the finding that you're not even increasing the nonconformity, then it's -- they don't even need a special permit. But under no case would a variance actually be required. And then he goes on to say in the last sentence, "The underlying issue with Gale was whether the landowner was required to obtain a variance in addition to a special permit in order to reconstruct a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family house that would have added new nonconformity." Okay? So this is a case where they were making a change that was creating a new nonconformity in the court rule. Doesn't matter, you don't need a variance, it's all special permit. So our rules of procedure, which we can change ourselves, need to be slightly modified. I started working on it. I don't have a final version yet that, you know, overnight. But I think in light of a similar case we have coming up, that we need to kind of be cognizant of this is how a recent court ruling has clarified this.
Can we just talk about the paragraph between the two highlighted? So despite the clarification by the Gale holding, it still leaves open several other issues pertaining to reconstruction, alteration, or expansion of certain other pre-existing nonconforming uses or structures.
Correct.
So does that mean -- can you just help translate? I agree with what you're saying.
What he's getting at is non-single or two-family structures.
It's between the two highlighted.
The last two highlighted, second page.
It's right between it. It's basically the -- this is the exception. And I just want to make sure I understand.
What they're getting at is that the 48, the section of 48, which is Section 6, basically, is, he's calling it difficult and infectious language, which is not infectious and malicious. Anyway, it's really difficult to understand.
Yep.
And there's always been -- there's been a lot of problems with the interpretation of that and how zoning boards or planning boards, in this case maybe, are supposed to interpret that. So for single and two-family, pre-existing nonconforming structures, this case clarifies the review.
Oh, I understand now.
Everything else, it's still vague. So if somebody is in the existing nonconforming warehouse in the industrial district.
Yep.
This review doesn't apply.
And that's what that progress is. Okay, I misread it.
Exactly. There are other existing nonconforming uses and structures that we can't apply this.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Because they don't follow any standard.
Really about single and multiple.
What it's basically saying is you don't -- you really -- you no longer need a permit, specifically don't need, excuse me, a variance.
If you have an existing nonconforming building and you want to --
Single or two-family.
Single or two-family. You want to make changes to it, as long as they're not increasing the nonconformity. Even if they're increased -- no.
Yep, they can increase.
It can increase if it meets the criteria of --
It just can't be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Three things for the variance, for the --
And you have to meet the Section 1 --
Yep.
Whatever it is, sorry, violation notice. Section 16579. You gotta meet -- you gotta otherwise meet the conditions for a special permit.
I understand.
But not a variance threshold, i.e. hardship and lots, soil tapes, you know, soil condition shape to park the files. All right? So that's that. I would hang on to it for now. And I indicated to Paul and Patty that I would make a stab at trying to review our rules of procedure and edit them.
So we can put it on the next agenda?
Yeah, and in the meantime, you know, when we see a case like this, we just have to keep in mind that that's what the Supreme Court has ruled. So we should act accordingly, even though our rules of procedure are not necessarily consistent. There you go.
As next, we don't even have a new application for next month. Stay.
Good.
That's all I have on that.
And I'm actually, I'm probably not going to be here.
Don't solicit for them.
Not that done. Not that that makes sense.
On to -- thank you, Jeff, for that.
Good job, Jeff.
You can have Dave do minutes.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Building inspector corresponds, we're on item three correspondence.
Okay, let me get to that in a second. Okay, this is a violation notice dated April 29th. He received a complaint, issued this on the 29th, and then issued a denial on May 15th. So now this applicant will -- this is now going to be an applicant who -- this is two separate dwellings. It's a home and a separate, what used to be an old garage carriage house. Now they would like to apply for a multifamily. So that's going to be next. They're preparing their application, but I have a decision from this property address that they were granted an accessory apartment back in 2001, but was never recorded. So it was never legal. So we're in the process, I'm working with the town administrator and town council. My copy, Paul, let me speak to Jonathan Eichman by email. And I just asked, what do we do with this now? Can they record it now? Because Jan McGrane, the town clerk, you know, you don't want to certify something. And there's also only two signatures on the decision. Although it was granted, and I'm thinking, because in the text of the decision, it says granted, it doesn't say unfortunately, 30, 40, 50.
This was for an accessory apartment, right?
Yes, in 01. So my questions were, can it be recorded now? Can the town clerk -- because anytime before you get it recorded, she has to certify that it wasn't appealed, that 20 days went and no one appealed it. And then the question is, another question I put forth was, if I find more decisions that have never been recorded, would -- are they null and void? What do we do? So we're waiting on more.
Is that relevant to them applying for a multifamily, though?
Um.
I mean, it's --
They can -- they're still going forward with their application.
Right. Well, I would imagine they would.
But Jan McGrane actually would not. They wanted to then go get it recorded.
Yeah.
And she wouldn't do it, so that, you know, together it all came, and we went to Mike, and Mike said, yeah, let's look into it in case it happens again. What if --
Yeah.
What if they go for this and you don't give it to them, then they think they still have an accessory apartment?
Right.
Or not.
Yep, yep. That makes sense.
So is it still good, is it not? Can it still be recorded? And it's good to know if we come -- if we come across it again.
Do you know if there's been any response after the 15-day notice was issued?
Yes, they came right in. And then that's when he gave them the -- he did the denial letter. So, okay, what's next?
Hold business.
I don't know if Jeff had a chance to -- I just put a little sheet there because that's some discussion we had on the zoning application before, about having no mortgage survey plans. If you look at -- I have a little tab there for you to look at on the second.
Yeah, we sort of talked about this last time.
Yeah, the first page where it says, "Application checklist." I changed that and I added under, where it says mortgage survey plans. And I added, "This will be determined on a case-by-case basis." Because, I mean, if someone is putting a, you know.
My take on this was John saying he doesn't require it as long as the structure is within 10 feet of the required setback.
Right.
In other words, if it's, I think I would ask Paul, he said, unless it's completely obvious, it's not even close to being nonconforming.
Right.
And the setback, the sidelines are easily delineated by a wall or a fence or something. He says, "I'll take that plus 10 feet if it looks good. I'll accept this for a building permit." My take was, if they're coming to us.
They're already in the setbacks.
For, I can't imagine, unless it's for a use or something.
A lot of times, though, they don't know where the lot line is.
Then they can't have a bank -- I mean, how does that help us?
Right, that's why I put on a case by --
I mean, you gotta be certified.
Then they have to get a survey.
It's anything to do with dimensions, you know? So I was trying to figure out why we would ever accept a mortgage plan.
We shouldn't.
I mean, it was, I don't think we ever would.
I thought we decided that.
But the building inspector has a lot more flexibility, you know?
Exactly.
Somebody wants to do a portico, okay? And the house is 100 feet back, obviously, and that's, you know, according to the septic system and the mortgage plot plan, you know, it's a no-brainer, they're gonna add, they're gonna add 10 feet, you know what I mean?
Exactly, yeah. I thought his is reasonable.
I think it's very reasonable.
But if they come to us, it's because there's something in question.
Right, exactly.
That needs to be more clearly delineated.
If it gets to us, you know, he'll have a --
So it's always never okay. It's always someone who just, you know, drew a picture and put the pole here and made an arrow.
The only thing I can think is if it's for a use. If it's, if it's, maybe, maybe.
I think we just said it's not okay.
But even then, I don't, you know.
Or he's just not comfortable going off that plan because it's close, and that way they just --
I got this from another, three other towns that do not accept them at all.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I don't think we should either. I don't.
Because if it's coming to us, there's already a question. So we should say, you need something.
What about also?
What if it's an existing nonconforming, and they want to put an addition on it?
They better have.
And they're encroaching even closer to their property line, but they're not increasing the nonconformity.
How do we know?
Yeah.
Without a plot plan, how do we know what the numbers are?
If they're proposing it, they have to have an engineer do it.
Plus or minus 10 feet. Property lines are pretty, well, pretty evident.
That's exactly the case where you need to have somebody survey and let us know.
What about if it's --
Someone took the pins on the right side of my property line.
What John is saying is, he doesn't even give leeway unless it's like, obviously, within 10 feet of conforming.
Right, yep.
If it's not conforming, you've blown that right out of the water, so you obviously can't use a -- he would never accept this mortgage survey anyways. It almost doesn't matter.
If it was not conforming.
If it was, even if it's conforming, but it's closer than what he's saying, you know, 10 feet. In other words, in the situation you're talking about, what I'm saying is, he's going to require it anyway. Because it's not going to get past him with a mortgage survey if he's talking about something that close.
That's why he should deny it.
He's going to deny it and say, get a survey and go see the zoning board.
And if he denies it based on his knowledge about looking at a mortgage plan or a sanitation plan, we can't overrule that.
That's fine.
Yes, you know, so we're getting that? He's not going to say, oh, you're nonconforming. How does he know?
Yeah.
He's not going to know unless he has what he needs and some of them to determine.
Lake Shore.
Well, it's just not a --
Right. Well, do you think that, I mean, that's what I'm saying, like, just be clear to me is like, if you know your building's an existing nonconforming, you just know it because they almost all are. Not true, but a lot of them are. And you want to put an addition on that, do you need to get a, you know, $1,500 survey for that?
Totally, I would say. All right, well.
But for a case like this, this denial we just have, it's an existing structure, there's no changes going to -- all right, what do you want for that one? It's an existing structure, the house, and then a separate dwelling that they want to make them, you know, whatever they want to do. But they're not doing any more building. Can we use -- they have a, right now, all they have is a septic plan. That was a question I was asking.
What's the requested change?
It's that.
The carriage house?
Denial.
Oh, oh, oh. See, that's what I'm getting at.
Can I take the --
That's a use.
All they have is a septic --
That's what I'm saying is, the only time I could see was it's completely non-dimensional.
So all I have is --
They're not building anything.
Right. So I can, I have the septic plan, which shows the street, it shows everything. It shows the lot lines, it shows the lot and the next lot.
Mm-hmm.
So in something like that.
Well, what's the, what's the plan? You're slowly working on changes to the application, which we haven't approved yet anyway.
Right.
And there's some other things we were going to look at. We don't have, you don't have a final draft that you want to take action on tonight, right?
This was the last -- no, I just wanted, well --
Yeah, let's continue it again. Let's continue to ponder it. Let's get it right.
Well, there's a whole bunch of other stuff in there.
So do you want to take this out? Do you want to leave this in?
I want to discuss it further.
Okay. You don't want to need to take that?
I think generally, I think it's correct that you do need to have a proper survey for that. But I was just wondering about that, this situations where they're so obviously nonconforming and they want to put an addition on, why do they have to invest in a survey when we know it is?
That's why I put in, "This will be determined on a case-by-case basis," and then the chairman can --
Do we want that, though? Case-by-case basis? You don't, you wouldn't like that.
Take it out.
Then who's going to, who's going to answer that?
Yeah, I see it's --
You're going to make that decision every time?
Okay.
That's not fair to you.
I'm just trying to think how many --
Perhaps more work for me and I'm not a common citizen.
How many times it occurs, you know, in your personal case, yeah, you did need a survey.
Of course, yeah. Yeah, I mean, any time, if you're nonconforming, unless, again, you're not going to actually do any construction.
You were conforming, though, weren't you? You're conforming.
Yeah, well, yeah, but, I mean.
We'll discuss it later.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the only time I could see, you don't have to have a survey is if you're not doing any construction at all.
Yeah, usually --
Right, or --
It's probably a good idea.
If you're not, if you're coming to us, it's either dimensional.
Coming to us is different than going to building.
Yep, all right.
Okay, so do you want to leave that in, take that out?
Yeah, take that out.
Take that, this will be determined on case-by-case?
Yeah.
Leave the rest in?
And essentially, what Jeff is suggesting is that you do need a certified plot plan if you're coming before the ZBA for a special permit or a variance.
Yes.
Or a finding.
Yeah, I just can't think of, other than maybe a use, I can't think of any other reason.
Okay.
Because they're not going to get through a zoning enforcement officer without having what they need anywhere.
Jones, too.
He's CS. And then the last page of it, that floodplain part, because there was never a fee in there for floodplain, and that's usually --
You're going to make it the same as?
Expensive, yeah. I was thinking, just keep it with water resource, keep it consistent.
Makes sense.
And add it as H. And do you want to have more time to look at this, and we'll put it on the next agenda again?
Yes, I would.
I really haven't had time to sit there and actually, it's just been too busy.
You've added a whole bunch of stuff in here that --
Yeah, I added everything.
Not since last meeting, but two meetings ago, that I haven't had the chance to do. So I'd personally like to look at it a little closer.
Okay, so I'm going to continue this, too.
Okay.
Continue.
That do it for the business meeting, folks?
And the other thing we had on old business was the accessory apartments, but that's just --
It's an FYI.
Yeah. I don't know where you want to go with it. That's what we talked to John about last time, and he wanted to, he mentioned, you know, doing something to close the loop when, you know.
I think we should talk about it again at a different, at a later meeting, another time.
Do we have any hearings next month, unless something continues?
No.
No, so.
Should we have a meeting? Should we have a meeting? Just a short one?
Well, suggesting that if...
Yeah.
If we were already scheduling one. Yeah, we could go through this stuff when we have one.
Okay.
Do we need to be on air for that one next month? Just have a meeting downstairs? All right.
Okay. Motion to...
Yes, I'm, please make a motion to close the business meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're not gonna take a break. We're gonna keep going. So 36 Prospect, can I, you guys come back up here?
You gotta open 118 Thurlow first.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. Do not have that in front of me, Patty.
Second.
Sorry about that, folks. What we're gonna do is...
Do those two, do that right now.
First, we're going to open, as discussed before, we're going to open the 118 Thurlow Street hearing, and then we're going to continue it and then go on to the Prospect to finish that business and then come back to the Thurlow Street. Okay? Go ahead, you can read the lead. Thank you very much, sir. Oh, I gotta open it first. Hold on. Uh, "The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, tape may be taped over." Uh, "The members of the board tonight are Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore, Dave Kapnis, and myself, Paul Schilling." So if you could read that legal notice.
Jeff?
What did I say?
Do we need to ask our butter if it's okay to move it as well?
Absolutely.
While I read this in and that gets it opened and I...
Yeah, after you read the legal notice.
All right. "Legal notice for Town of Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals, 118 Thurlow Street. An application, an applicant petition has been made by John E. and Nancy L. McManus of 118 Thurlow Street, Georgetown, Mass. To modify the previous decision for a variance by modifying or removing a 1985 variance condition and potentially issuing a new special permit for modification to a pre-existing nonconforming single- or two-family structure prior to the issuance of a building permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 10, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapters 165, Chapter 165, Sections 9, 79, 84, 89, and 94. The premises affected is 118 Thurlow Street, Georgetown, Mass., in the RB District, and identified in the assessor's map, 12, Lot 71. The applicant, application will be heard by the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals at the Georgetown Town Hall, Third Floor Room, June 14, 2013, at 7:30 PM. ZBA File Number 13-12, advertised in the Georgetown Record on 5/23."
Is there anyone that has a problem with having this hearing postponed for a little while? No?
Okay, 'cause I spoke to Nancy McManus and...
So noted.
And then I contacted Mr. Arsenal and he wanted to put them first.
Great, thank you.
So I'll make a motion then to continue the hearing for 118 Thurlow Street for this evening immediately following the conclusion of the hearing for 36 Prospect Streets. Prospect Streets, excuse me.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Leave it open.
Yep. All right. Now we are going to open 36 Prospect Street. Uh, reopen, excuse me, not open. So do I need to read the legal notice again, Patty? Yeah?
If you want to, you can, you can move to waive the reading, since it's continuance.
I think we should, I think we'll do that.
I'd read it.
Oh, you would? Okay. You're right, you would.
Can I read?
Who else said to read that?
I am. We're opening the hearing for 36 Prospect Street. Uh, "The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rule of, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over." And once again, the board members are Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, Jeff Moore, Dave Kapnis, and myself, Paul Schilling. And someone will read the legal notice for me.
And, Gina? An application has been made by Thomas and Lisa Simmons at 36 Prospect Street, Georgetown, Mass., for a special permit under MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9, and the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws, Chapter 165, Sections 9, 74-79. The owner applicants are requesting to convert a single-family dwelling to a multifamily dwelling. The premises affected is 36 Prospect Street, Georgetown, Mass., in the RA District, and identified on the assessor's map, 11A, Lot 6. The application will be heard by the Georgetown Zoning Board of Appeals at the Georgetown Hall, Third Floor. This is a continuation from the hearing of May 7, 2013."
Thank you, sir. I do have, uh, two correspondence I'm going to read as pertaining to this. However, you guys, if you have anything new to add to this hearing, go right ahead and bring us up to speed with whatever you have on your end. And then I'll read these two correspondence that are from the building inspector.
Sure. Um, "We submitted to the board a couple of different other parking schemes. Uh, this first scheme is designed just to show that there could be an excess of parking on the premises. Uh, the one we would prefer is this scheme where we've added two additional spaces in the parking of the lot, um, and that's the furthest distance from Ms. Amself's residence across the street. And that would provide us with, um, six off-street parking spaces where four are required. Uh, in addition, it would address the concerns that the board had about the front-back parking scheme of the additional, of the existing dwelling on the premises. We feel like this parking scheme will minimize the impact on the neighborhood. There is a fence along that lot line, too, so it would be shielded from the abutting property owners. Uh, in addition, um, in the interim, my client has received a report from his expert as to the remediation of the building. Uh, I know there was concern about that. We do have a written report at this time. We'd be happy to share it for you, with you, but I think that's probably more of a building inspector's issue if we, if we get past the special permit."
Are you interested in hearing that report?
Uh, you wanna give us the 10 second?
Can we just mark those two as exhibits first?
Sure.
So can we mark six, the sixth space scenario as Exhibit A? Is that okay? What's the other one? Is it four?
It says 12.
Oh, 12.
It's 12.
12 as Exhibit B. I don't know where I got that from, sorry. So six and 12.
And the minutes maybe should reflect that the preferred one is A. The preferred by the applicant is A.
Um, you had asked me to address the issue of remediation. Essentially, the report says the same thing that Mr. Simmons summarized for you at the prior hearing, that there's gonna have to be structural work done to remove the house to the premises, that they're gonna have to work down through the first floor. I believe Tom could probably address this better than I, that they're gonna, they're gonna contain all of the material when they remove it from the premises. They're gonna use water to try and contain the dust when they do the work on the premises. And they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to see as they go down through the house how much they need to remove.
Okay.
Pretty much, the second floor will be guarded, you know, sheetrock insulation.
Yep.
And obviously upgraded to today's standards with fire and smoke CO. So that's what, you know, I have to do.
All right, why don't I go ahead and read these correspondence? I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna let you read the second one. I'll read the first one. Let's get the date right. May 8?
20.
May 20, okay. Uh, this is a, a letter to Tom Simmons, 36 Prospect Street. Uh, "Dear Mr. Simmons, July 29, on July 29, 2010, I conducted a final inspection of prop..." Oh, yes, at 36 Prospect Street. During the inspection, the property was verified to be in compliance with the amended addition permit number B10-119. The amended permit and plans dated May 3, 2010, attached was for a three-bedroom addition. On July 29, 2010, the addition complied with the permit and the additions. The lower level of the addition contained a garage and unfinished storage area, an additional unfinished room marked as a shop on the plan, mechanical room, and a half bathroom. During the May 7, 2013, Zoning Board of Appeals public hearing, you and your attorney, Mr. Arsenal, stated multiple times that the addition consisted of five bedrooms. The certified plot plan also lists the structure as a five-bedroom. No permits have been taken out to add additional bedrooms or convert existing spaces to bedrooms. I would like to inspect the property at 36 Prospect Street to understand this disconnect and ensure compliance with the applicable codes and the zoning bylaw. Please contact this office at your earliest convenience to set up an inspection. End, John Mativier."
New correspondence, number two, to Tom Simmons from Georgetown Building Inspection Department. "Dear Mr. Simmons, on May 20, 2013, I conducted an inspection of your property at 36 Prospect Street. I was accompanied by Steve Prozjemski, the Town of Georgetown Conservation Agent. The inspection was conducted to verify compliance with the amended addition permit number B10-119. The amended permit and plans dated May 3, 2010, was for a three-bedroom addition. On July 29, 2010, I observed the lower level of the addition had a garage, a TV room, plum for a sink, a full bathroom and a half bathroom, two mechanical rooms, and a future shop, in parentheses. On May 20, 2013, I observed the unfinished garage area and shop are now finished and used as habitable space. The addition still contains three bedrooms as previously approved and not the five bedrooms shown on the as-built plot plan. John Mativier, Commissioner of Buildings."
Or do you have any, anything you wanna add to these, this correspondence? You have any issues, questions? Uh, once we address those correspondence, then we're gonna let the audience come forward and...
I, I also have another question, 'cause on your new plot plan, it shows an existing three-bedroom as the one you're living in, but you changed the existing from a three-bedroom, which was from last month, to a four-bedroom on this month's.
That was a mistake on the start.
Your surveyor made all these mistakes?
Yeah, just the one.
No, there's two, 'cause he made a five-bedroom and a three-bedroom, and now it's suddenly a three-bedroom and a four-bedroom.
I refer you to the architectural plans that we submitted that should show four bedrooms in the existing home. We apologize for that error. We carried it over by referring to the plan at the hearing, but I think we've got it accurately reflected now.
Okay.
Four or three?
Four bedrooms in the, in the, the older portion of the structure, three bedrooms in the newer portion.
Four bedrooms in the existing?
In the first structure.
Okay, and that's on a three-bedroom septic plan that was identified by the Board of Health?
There's a, there's a restriction currently on the property for three bedrooms. And that's all there is in the portion that's being habited, that's habitable right now. We have a proposed nine-bedroom system that's been approved by the Board of Health.
I understand that.
That would be installed before we were allowed to occupy the older portion of it.
Well, my question is, is the existing structure is a four-bedroom structure?
Original structure.
The original structure is a four-bedroom structure. And the septic system is for a three-bedroom.
That's not what I see.
That's possible. It may have been nonconforming at the time.
Do we have a copy of the, uh, letter from Board of Health, Deb Rogers, stating what that lot was approved for?
I, I have, I, there's one just July 1, 2010.
A restriction was placed on deed in a negotiated settlement with the Board of Health at the time that the application was withdrawn with the ZBA in 2009, 2010.
I understand that.
Restricting the use of the property to three bedrooms. I'm not certain of what the design is of the system, to be honest with you.
Well, that's, we have some documentation from the Board of Health.
Yeah, there's an email that Paul...
Well, the architectural plans show three bedrooms in the existing...
In the old home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that direct on?
I'd have to see them.
Yeah, there's, uh, three bedrooms. Second floor has three bedrooms.
Three on, yeah, three on the second floor and... Well, that office can be a bedroom. The office could be a bedroom.
I mean, is it an office or a bedroom?
One, one says an office, one says a den, and one says a bedroom.
I know.
And then there's a nursery.
Malarkey, in my opinion. Nothing matches. I'm confused.
Well, maybe we can refer to the minutes of the previous hearing when they asked a specific question, how many bedrooms are in the front? Mr. Simmons said it's three bedrooms. It will be the same footprint. Then I asked a question, how many bedrooms are in the rear? Mr. Simmons says five bedrooms. I said, "That's quite a few," and he said, "I have a lot of kids," and we have a stepson, three kids. So 30 days ago, you know how many bedrooms you're using, you said five. So maybe there's a misunderstanding here, but I'm also equally confused, because this said five, this said three. You claimed you were using five in the rear, and you had always used three, over planning to use three. And that was just 30 days ago, so...
The zoning enforcement agent did conduct an onsite inspection of the premises and was satisfied that there were three bedrooms in the rear.
Reason why you tell me you were using five?
I'm not using five. Were you at the time? What do you mean? Were you using five bedrooms at the time? No. At the last hearing, when you and your attorney both stated you were using five? No, I have a TV room downstairs and... So you were confused at the time, you thought the TV room and the office were bedrooms at the time? The house is designed to have five.
Not according to your plans. Not according to your plans. So I'm sorry, but I've just, your credibility is a little bit in question right now, because you say one thing, you change it. Your plans don't say the same thing. Your certified, your surveyor is changing stuff on his certified plot plans, and I don't know what to believe anymore. I really don't. I'm very frustrated with everything.
The current plans were submitted in an effort to bring the property in compliance with what we believe the permitted use of the property was. We admit that there was an error in the prior plans and have a tendency to correct it on the current plan. And there has been an inspection done by the zoning enforcement agent who provided you with a written report that he's satisfied that the addition is being used in compliance with the issued building permit.
John, did you, excuse me, did you inspect the initial house for the number of bedrooms?
John Mativier for the record.
Sorry, am I allowed to ask him directly?
Yeah, of course. Yes, I did inspect the addition. So you're asking...
No, the existing.
The existing, original.
The old house.
I was in the existing twice, but I didn't go really beyond the kitchen. I didn't inspect every floor.
So you just inspected the addition, which is the second house garage?
Yes, yeah. The only time I was in the main house was when they were removing the cooking and kitchen facilities to bring that into compliance.
I have a suggestion, which is if this remediation is done to the existing, the older structure, I don't know what to call it. At that time, the building inspector's gonna have to provide an occupancy permit. Am I correct after the, after the remediation is done, John?
If, so if there's a change in use, I will issue an additional certificate of occupancy.
Right.
So if it becomes a two-family for this board, an additional occupancy certificate will be issued. If it's remained a single-family and it's some sort of modification, no additional.
So if, if this board allows the multifamily use, the zoning enforcement agent, the building inspector, will issue a new occupancy certificate that will resolve the number of allowed bedrooms on the premises. Am I correct, John, in that statement?
So...
So it's out of our control to some extent, I guess is my point. And we'll put the appropriate septic system, and obviously, we'll have to go through Board of Health approval. We'll, you know, we'll have to get all those additional approvals if this board will allow that use on the property.
But my fear is, you haven't done any approvals before, and you haven't really abided by any of the ones that were set forth. So how can I trust that whatever we approve today is gonna be upheld? And I'm, I'm not, you have to prove to me that you can follow rules, because I don't see them being followed right now.
I, I don't understand why you make that statement. There was an inaccuracy?
I'm not just talking about this. I'm talking everything that led us to this point.
Once again, there was nothing hidden from this board. These plans were submitted to this board in 2009 and then withdrawn under an agreement with the building inspector at that time to allow the use of the addition to house this family, so they wouldn't be displaced anymore. At that time, it was unclear what was gonna be necessary to remediate the front building. That's all adequately documented in your record. I thought we had resolved the misunderstanding around that at the last hearing. Uh, I understand that, and obviously, it's your province to make judgments regarding credibility. That doesn't change the fact that, in my opinion, my client is entitled to a special permit under the standards of this board. That this is not going to be more detrimental to the neighborhood, that it's not gonna overburden these utilities in the town. The concrete factors that this board is required by law to examine, my client has met that burden of proof and is, and is willing to submit to reasonable conditions put on the property by the board as well as to go through the additional approvals that are required both from the building inspector as well as the Board of Health before the property can be used. Never mind the fact that he's gonna have to go through a significant remediation of the property before he can use it. As I explained at the prior hearing, this is the first step in a process that he has to go through in order to try and make you, make something bad out of a bad situation. And that's all he's trying to do here today. There is no effort to try and misuse the local bylaws or to bypass local bylaws. We wouldn't be here today. He wouldn't have submitted his 2009 application if that were the case. He would have done all of this under the radar and attempted to convert a garage into a home. But that's not what happened here. There were inspections done, there were applications submitted, and we find ourselves at this point here today.
Got a question for John on that point. Uh, you conducted a final inspection on 2010 for your correspondence. Uh, July 29, 2010, you conducted a final inspection of the property.
Correct.
And the basement was not finished at that time.
The garage portion was finished off with the required fire rating in the garage and the habitable space. Uh, there was a half-bath complete, a mechanical, two mechanical rooms complete. There was a full bath that was not complete and two other rooms, one labeled as a shop on the plan that was not complete and one labeled as, I forget what the label was.
Storage.
Storage.
TV rooms?
TV. No, not...
So you inspected last week?
So we, you know, it was... It was unfinished. But it had been inspected to that point, meaning, so I just wanted to be clear that they did get, I verified this with the plumbing and electrical inspection. They did get their rough plumbing and rough electrical. So, you know, they, it wasn't 100% complete at that point in time.
All right, I'm just, what I'm getting at is, now it's all finished in there. Did, would, did that require another permit or no, to do the work that you?
That should have had a...
It should have had a permit?
Additional permit.
And was any pulled for that?
Because we closed out the first one.
That's what I thought. So was there any permit pulled for that as far as you know?
There was not.
To, to clarify, a permit to do what? I'm sorry.
To shop those rooms on the lowest level of the addition.
Because they were expected to be unfinished?
Because when I closed, when we closed out to give the Simmons an occupancy permit and... I am so sorry.
Can I ask a different question while, because I, I'm, I'm still a little confused. On the, on the older structure, everything I had seen up until tonight, I thought said it was three bedrooms. How many bedrooms is the older structure today?
It has three bedrooms and a nursery on the...
Is nursery considered a bedroom or is, is? So it's three bedrooms. So you're, so, so am I correct then that as part of this, you're asking that to be, um, a four-bedroom?
I...
That, I mean, that's what it appears to me based on the plans that we got today. I believe, say, four bedrooms. So, so it's actually, part of this is increasing, adding a bedroom to the older structure? Am I understanding?
I'm not sure. I, I'd like to know. I, I'd like to get to the point where, I'd like to know what it is you're asking of this board. I, I do, I, I, everybody else is... Your counsel's right. I mean, at some point, it's a matter of, what is it that you've applied to this board for? And we need to assess what the impact would be to the neighborhood based on what it is you have?
We need to understand.
And based on what it is you want. And we all know that there's issues with the existing, but that's fine. Um, my understanding was that that would always be, has always been classified as a three-bedroom structure, the older.
Yes.
Original. Three bedrooms, correct?
Yes.
Is that, that's right.
Okay.
And it's a three-bedroom, it's a three-bedroom septic system. That's all it's approved for.
And, and the septic system is adequate for three bedrooms, or at least that's what it was approved in the letter from the Board of Health. Um, if you just bear with me, am I train of thought? Yeah, let me get this down. Uh, the recorded deed restricts, restricts you now to three bedrooms as well. Okay.
Okay. So currently, it's...
John was in the middle of talking and then Sharon started, so I've lost what John was saying.
Go ahead, John.
About the lower level, he started saying something about they're now finished rooms. And then he phoned.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure there was no misunderstanding that he did get all the, um, inspections. The original plan showed it as a storage area, and, uh, there was a rough electrical, rough plumbing inspection. So we, we were at the point where they needed to move in. We thought, we, working with Attorney Arsenal, we had a solution, uh, as well as the Board of Health, to get the Simmons into the addition to live. In order to issue an occupancy permit, we need to close up the permit, so it was closed up.
I see.
Since then, he's finished off those, those two rooms. He, you know, he should have pulled an additional permit to do that, but...
Because it was...
There's nothing that's been hidden in that process.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
I understand.
If you don't mind, I'd like to just, can I finish my?
You're train of thought, yes.
Train of thought on this because I'm...
Sorry, John.
Okay, so I, to, to try and resolve the issue of what it is that you have and what it is you're asking for, I just want to make it clear that it's existing. The older structure was always three bedrooms, classified as three-bedroom structure. The septic is adequate for three bedrooms, or at least that's what the deed restriction currently restricts you to. I assume, I can presume, because that's what it's adequate for to support.
Well, just to clarify that, I'm not sure about the design of the system. The restriction was put on as part of the approval of the addition process to restrict the number of bedrooms.
Okay, so they were going to restrict them to nothing more than with the current use of the...
I've not reviewed the prior...
Maybe it was to limit the, the use of the property to the current use or something.
Okay.
But that's, that's fair enough.
As part of this process?
They recognize that that property was being used for three, a three-bedroom dwelling. It's going to still be, continue to be used as a three-bedroom dwelling, and you're saying you've never used it for anything more than a three-bedroom dwelling, even though there was some, obviously some misunderstandings last month about how many...
You just stated a little while ago that there's four bedrooms in the existing dwelling. And now you're saying it's, one of them is a nursery. Okay, what's the difference between a nursery and a child's bedroom?
Well, the nursery's kind of small.
What size is it?
Uh, four hour and a half feet wide by ten, ten feet long.
Is that on the plans anywhere?
Five, five four by twelve three.
Five four by twelve three.
It's on X two, Dave.
Something like that.
X two on the architectural. Uh, that, that's the plot.
Still under the seventy, though, isn't it?
What's that?
This is, on this one, it says...
Illegal bedroom is seventy?
It's right here, but on this one, it says...
Seventy square feet.
It, it would be right here, but that one, that plan says computer room, not nursery.
No, the second floor.
That's first floor?
Second floor has a nursery.
Nursery's on the second floor. Remit. I got to run one.
A one?
So look at X one.
Well, I don't think that's, it's, it's really not a point. If it's below seventy square feet, it's not, it's not considered illegal bedroom. But you have to understand, when you start saying, you know, yeah, it's a four-bedroom, and we're sitting here, and you're confusing us even more. We're confused about a five-bedroom addition that you and your attorney stated several times last month, and all of a sudden, prior to inspection, it turns into a three-bedroom. I don't understand how somebody could actually make that mistake. You know, I mean, in a place where you live to say, I got a, I got five bedrooms? No, it's only three. That's a lot of the confusion that we're dealing with, too, because there's confusion in the original, there's confusion on the addition, there's confusion on additional work that was done without permits, there's confusion about way back when, prior to Mr. Mativier being the inspector, about what was actually done regarding documentation or, or lack of documentation. I do, you know, know that what I'm hearing continually gets contradicted upon some questioning. And it just adds to more and more confusion about what we're dealing with, what we're asking for, what we're hearing, and what we're seeing.
All I can suggest to you that is if, as part of this process, he has to go back to the building inspector and get an occupancy permit, that's going to define the number of bedrooms that are available on the premises. The front building is a very old home, right? I mean, many people with older homes consider rooms in the house to be a bedroom. Uh, as Tom stated, that room downstairs could potentially be used as a bedroom, and that's not unusual in the use of residential dwellings. Um, the, the true way to, to, to define this, though, is through what the building inspector will allow under current building codes. With my clients, when they have rental properties, I always require them to get an occupancy certificate before they rent the property.
Mm-hmm.
In order to protect them from these types of claims going forward.
I mean, here, you know, you have a nine-bedroom septic system designed, okay? And you're telling us that the plan is only for three, uh, six bedrooms? Why spend all that extra money to go nine bedrooms, increasing it fifty percent when there's no intention to go beyond six?
We can modify those plans and reduce the size, and certainly the Board of Health can put restrictions on the number of bedrooms allowed on the premises as well. I mean, we can resolve that issue, I guess is what I'm saying. That can be resolved through any number of departments in the town. And clearly is, is an issue that can be resolved through the building code and the health codes. The state sanitary code is going to restrict the number of occupants that are allowed on the premises, is going to require a certain septic system at a minimum for the premises. Those are all issues that will be resolved in, in future hearings, should we be allowed a special permit today.
Can I, one second?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to add, uh, any input? Please come up and identify who you are, and again, you should address the, the board directly, not the applicant.
My name is Audrey Parr. Um, I'm Mrs. Ann's best friend, but, and I spoke to you last time that we were here. Um, she's going to speak about, you asked her last time that we were here about giving different ideas about if, in fact, you were good to consider allowing the special permit, which she vehemently opposes. So I don't know if she's, needs to do that now or not.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So, because she does oppose it completely for all the different reasons we've talked about. She's talked about it already.
Yeah, okay.
There are a number of issues that I, I think you should consider if you are indeed going to seriously consider this application. Um, first of all, the issue of the construction, the new construction on the older part of the home. Uh, one of my concerns is what the, what the size might end up being. It sounds like it's, you're gutting it, they're going down to the first floor possibly. Um, I don't think they should be allowed to add additional bedrooms. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Simmons told me that they were going to be changing the roof line. Does that mean that they intend on making that front of the house taller than it is now, the way the addition ended up being taller than people let it was, were let it was going to, were led to believe it was going to be? So, um, I'm concerned based on past history that any work done on the existing older part of the house is going to end up making that section of the house more massive than it is already, and the entire structure more massive than it is already. Also, I think, uh, there should be a stipulation that, um, that the home owns the owner occupied, you know, on a permanent basis. I think it would be going in the wrong direction to one day have an absentee landlord who really has no interest in the neighborhood, let alone the town. I know, uh, Mr. Simmons did talk about maybe ten years down the road, they would sell the home and move to Maine. Who knows what his plans are, but, um, I'm planning to stay there for a long time. I've been there twelve years. I turned sixty today, and I'm planning to grow old in my home. So I care about what happens to the neighborhood and the town. Also, the question of how many multifamilies there are on the street. I know that he stated that there were five or six. I can only identify three myself, and even those three were quite discreet. Um, if there are additional multifamilies on the street, I couldn't clearly identify them, but they're obviously very discreet. Their home is, is the opposite of discretion at this point. Um, and I'm also concerned about what happens when additional parking goes in. I just took a very quick, um, look at these proposed plans. One of the versions has room for twelve parking spaces. Um, right now, none of the parking is blacktopped, um, from what I understand, because they didn't have the funds to pay for that at the time. I believe all of you have seen the property. Picture all of that parking blacktopped. It would look like a large commercial parking lot in the neighborhood. Now, I realize there is a commercial end to the street. We're not at the commercial end. It's strictly residential in our conception of the neighborhood. Also, um, if you were to approve this application, I think the number of adult tenants should be limited right now, um, and be limited to two additional vehicles on the property. Right now, there are at least three vehicles on the property now, and there are only three adults living there. It's just their family, and there are already three vehicles parked there. Um, so I really think that the total number of vehicles needs to be limited in order to try to preserve the character of the neighborhood. And if you do approve this application, I'd also like to, um, like to talk about the construction hours. Uh, there were some problems in the past. I think any construction should be strictly limited to normal business hours. I don't know whether that starts at seven a.m., it goes to six, or something reasonable in there. Um, if you approve construction on a Saturday, I think there should be three, four hours, starting later in the morning, ending earlier in the day. No late-night construction. Um, that's, that's been a problem in the past. I really don't think it's fair to me or my neighborhood, the rest of the neighborhood, to have any late-night construction. And finally, um, I'm very concerned about the issue of compliance. There've been compliance issues, obviously, in the past, many steps along the way. And I think if this application is approved and you're seriously considering it, I think you really need to have some very strict town oversight of all the construction, considering of what has gone on in the past. And, um, and those are my comments, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? No? Okay.
Jeff, you were going to say something earlier? Yeah, it was. The, so the new, the new construction, uh, that you're living in now, the intent is, uh, you don't intend to ever use that for more than three bedrooms? Or do you intend to expand that as part of this?
I think I should have the option to expand it, yes.
And how many bedrooms do you think you'd want to expand it to there?
Four.
Is that just a guess, or is that?
Are you talking about putting an additional, an addition on the premises?
Looking at the plans that have now been finished off, for the, the, the new construction that he's residing in now, is capable, just as you mentioned, some of the older homes, it's, you're capable of adding bedrooms, okay? Or using rooms as bedrooms. I think the one you've built now is certainly capable of something more than three bedrooms. We talked about it a month ago.
Sure.
I thought it was an awfully big garage.
I was limited to the three.
You're limited to the three, but, but in going forward, you won't be. So I'm just trying to look at what this is capable of handling, and to me, it looks like you could handle five bedrooms, which is...
It's absolutely capable.
Incidentally, something else, similar to the plan that you submitted last time. Uh, and you're looking at four bedrooms, uh, in your most recent plans for the front, over nine, that's nine. Is that, I'm just trying to understand. I want to make, everything ties together here to nine. If your rear is capable of five and your front is capable of...
There's that potential.
So therefore, that is what you're asking? I just need to make sure I understand. So am I correct that you're, you would like the rear to be five bedrooms and you would like the front to be four?
I wasn't prepared to finish to five bedrooms at this time. I would go in front of the building and inspect it for that.
Okay.
So the construction is more or less done back there now? It's just that the septic is limiting you to three, so although you finished it off evidently, and, and John has inspected it last week and said it's now finished off? I'm not, I'm not playing words here. I just want to understand.
There's a TV room, and there's a office, and there was a finished bathroom downstairs, yes?
Okay.
Next to that office.
But if you could, am I correct that you would expand it to five?
Well, that's why, yes. That's why I have the, the large enough septic system that would answer your question.
For five in the back and four in the front?
That's basically the intent.
At some point in the future.
Can I, I want to ask John a question. John? Um, how much additional construction would it take to convert those other two rooms to bedrooms, as it stands right now?
None.
Are there closets in there?
Um, I, I don't recall.
Okay.
I don't believe that there are. It was quite a bit of stuff in those two rooms.
But again, per code that, you know, that does, it's not necessary to have a closet, but...
Currently are being used as a TV room and an office. Can you put a bed in it? A bureau, a wardrobe, and sleep there? Yes. Code-wise, you can as well, because, um, there are smoke and COs per building code for those two B bedrooms.
So on your plan, is it the storage and the shop that are finished off?
The, the COs are there?
Yeah.
Now, why would you need a CO if it's not a bedroom?
Currently being used as an office and a TV room.
Okay, thank you.
Let me go back to parking for a minute, too, because, you know, I mean, you're right. At the end of the day, again, I'm looking at impact, okay? Because that's all that's really relevant. History is interesting. We are where we are, and I want to understand, you know, where we're going with this thing. Uh, you, you have a plan for twelve spaces?
That's just to show you that I have enough room, because you guys were concerned about the parking. And I wanted to show you a plan for twelve spaces.
So that you're capable of actually...
Yes, sir.
Park twelve cars off of them.
But I gave you a more reasonable one, that one there. I think we can make, that's exhibit A. Exhibit A is the more reasonable one. Maintaining the grass, making sure that things don't get too, too much blacktopped.
And per, per our bylaws, I think we only need two per dwellings, two, two, you would only need four. Okay.
I'm providing six.
There were concerns about off-street parking at the last hearing, so...
Right.
We wanted to show guest parking. It was sufficient off-street parking.
Uh-uh.
Somebody's phone, I think.
I think it was a phone.
Last time, no, it happened.
Yeah, we were here. Somebody had a fire? Remember we had a fire?
I don't think I have any other questions specifically.
I don't think I have anything to say.
Um, there's another question. You, you've got proposed arborvitae plantings. When I drove by, it looked like you had a big planting there already.
Yes, I do.
Are you taking those down?
I don't really want to. I don't really want to. It was a suggestion that I put something out there. I don't quite know what the design's going to look like, because, you know, I just wanted to appease people. But I, I made that nice circle. I actually planted that tree that's in there, from the big tree that's grown. That's, that's where that came from.
So would this, your exhibit A, your preferred parking plan, would that work? Would that?
I prefer, you know, I, I wouldn't mind putting a couple of arborvitae's here and there.
Right.
But I wouldn't like to go across it like a window and block that up. I wouldn't like that.
Okay, but this, this does work with what you currently have planted?
Uh, yeah, that works really nice, yes.
Isn't there a big tree there?
It's actually, I think that's nice.
Isn't there a really big tree there?
So these would be around the big tree?
I'm sorry. Well, maybe I could put a couple on the, you know, on the corner or something, you know? I would think that for nine bedrooms, six parking spaces is a little bit late. How many would you like? I'm not saying anything. I'm just thinking, what you're proposing here is suggesting that, you know, this would be the ideal situation, but, you know, two adults, two cars in one unit, two adults, two cars, and now you still got seven more bedrooms, and they can only have two cars. I have plenty of parking. But again, that was brought up as an issue, that it doesn't look like a, a parking lot.
So when you intend to rent this second one out, whether it's four bedrooms or less, is your intent to rent it to a family?
Absolutely.
Okay, so not like five college kids?
Uh, no. I don't, I, I just
Can we make that a condition? Because that's, that's my biggest fear.
I've been a landlord for twenty years.
Can you? No.
I don't know.
I'll wait for board discussion.
Okay. I, I'm just asking. Is that?
You can't probably do that
Is it? Yeah, it's, um, just a hammer and a nation.
I think it's unenforceable.
Okay.
And I wouldn't want that anyway. I would want a nice family coming to town.
But you can limit how many parking spaces per dwelling, provided it's minimal per the bylaw, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think
Or do I ask John that?
John said yes.
Yeah, so you can, so if, if you're required to do two, you can limit it to two per dwelling, you don't, you, yeah.
You can't require them to have one per dwelling because of anything
In violation, but you could say no more than two. Okay. Thank you.
But with nine bedrooms, you could be picking a bunch of cars onto the street, which is another issue, so
We don't want that.
If nine bedrooms are considered, right? I mean, if it's granted?
Discussion if we wanted to.
Yeah. Yeah, I would like to move to discussion.
I guess I've sort of started, sorry.
Now we're in discussion.
I think we are in discussion now.
I think we started without moving.
I think it's time for the board to start telling everyone how they feel, so we can move forward. Dave?
I'm not comfortable with how the whole process has gone, you know, back to day one, you know, in two thousand nine. I still have questions and issues as to, you know, what was followed procedurally wise, and, you know, it's hard for me to sit here and listen to, you know, Mr. Ossenault say, "Well, that was a mistake," you know, "and so, and the drawings, and something else was a mistake." There seems to be too many mistakes for it to be just such a coincidence. And I'm, I'm just not comfortable that, you know, this whole process and project has been adhered to, following not only, you know, town bylaws, building applications, permitting, and, you know, we just recently realized that, you know, you did finish two more rooms off without getting permits to do so. So I, I do have a problem with.
Well, yeah, how, why didn't you pull permits for finishing the, the rooms downstairs?
They were, they were primed when he came in. That's all I can say there. There was no floor, there was no rug, and I just got some used rug and some, not used rug, but cut-up rug from building nineteen, and an old piece of vinyl. That's all I put in that room. There was, there was
Where's John?
There was, uh, it was primed, so I did paint it, and that's really the only things I did.
It was, it was to drywall, finished, you know, finished trim, finished doors, flooring and finished electrical. It wasn't, you know, all the boxes were roughed in, but it weren't.
So when you originally went there to, to do the final for the original permit, it was just rough and was expected to remain rough, because it's storage or utility room? And now you're telling me it's actual finish, because it was, there's a big difference between rough and finish, as you know?
Yes, sir.
So?
It had trim, it was, it was primed, that was it.
Okay.
And John came through there, it was primed.
In two thousand ten, or, or just now? In two thousand ten.
And the electrical was rough?
Electrical was working.
John?
I don't recall that, but I remember, I'll be honest, I might
Well, rough is having, still having a receptacle in a box.
Yes.
Okay? And it's not, you know, was it, was there ever
I took, I took notes that day, and, but the notes that I took were more room counts and what am I, what I'm seeing on this date. Because I followed up the next day with a letter, because we were, you know, seeing, I'm not, I'm so certain, I do not remember if I finished carpentry in there, I don't remember trimming windows and doors. I remember rough plumbing coming out of the rear wall in what is now a TV room. Because in, and in my notes, I put possible kitchen sink in that room, but it was, it seemed like a strange place for a wardrobe to have a sink. Mr. Simmons pointed out that he might want a utility sink, which made perfect sense to me at that point. I do not remember finishing electrical at that point.
Now, that's a
Drywall was done, it was primed, it was
Yep.
Is it still roughed for plumbing in there?
No. Was it plumbing and cap then? It's not a sink there?
It was stubborn on that wall. I didn't see a sink.
The end result is, it's, it's, it, how we got there, I think, the, the entire board is in agreement that how we got here, this is mostly irregular, because we would have, we, I understand how you got here, but we would have redirected you away from multifamily for the, in the first, but I would have, I'm only speaking for myself. Secondly, we would have redirected you on, on the architectural manner, that the addition should have been more discreet, sort of done in a different way, but you were able to get all this by us without any of our input. Essentially, you disregarded the zoning board entirely. That's the problem here, and that's why whenever the board is wondering about all the, the lack of details, we're just wondering, many times, we have to, to make decisions based upon what will happen in the future. That's the issue, whether you're here or not. And this is why the board is, is, we're now stuck with this situation, but the building's there, it's done, with nine bedrooms potentially.
And it was never permitted that way?
No.
Well, I'm going back to the bylaw, and one sixty-five seventy-nine, and what we have to review when considering a case like this. Okay, we got a lot of facts to ponder. Generally, we would get an application that has a plan, one plan, that indicates what the intent is, and then in any decision, that plan can be referenced, the plan attached. This is what's been applied for, this is what we're talking about, and it's clear, obviously, there's several different plans here, none of which, by the way, except perhaps this original one, indicate what exactly the intention is. It's, it's five plus four, so I don't see any plan on here that shows a five-bedroom and then a four-bedroom and parking that would, you know, be adequate for that. But that's what we discussed, and that's what I think they just said that they would, they would need. So to me, you have a half-acre lot that has always been used as a three-bedroom dwelling prior to the incident, prior to the reconstruction, and since the reconstruction with the, with the occupancy permit that was provided, it was always been three bedrooms. Based on what they're really asking for here, they're wanting to increase the total usage of this lot to potentially nine bedrooms. That's a three-hundred percent increase in the intensity of the use on a half-acre lot, which, to me, is really hard to say is reasonable. I think it's, it's a bit of an unreasonable increase in the intensity, and I think it has a significant increase, significant potential to, you know, impair the integrity or character of the neighborhood based on, you know, noise, traffic, and other things. In, in looking at other two families in the area, whether there's two, three, or four, I had asked to take a look at some of those, and there's Twenty-Sixth Prospect Street as an example, two units, total number of bedrooms, four bedrooms combined, so two, two-bedroom units, or a three and a one, whatever it is. It's a total of four bedrooms. The intensity of the use, to me, falls back on how many people are going to be perhaps residing in the house. The septic's are based on that. Forty-seven Prospect Street, twenty-five hundred square feet of living area, again, total of four bedrooms. We're talking about going from three bedrooms on a half-acre lot to potentially nine bedrooms. Again, I, I don't think it's necessarily consistent with some of the other two-family requests in the area, whether they were existing non-conforming, or whether they were permitted that way. That's what's in that neighborhood, and again, the, the whole issue of this being discreet. I understand that this is now basically potentially a nine-bedroom home. I, I think that the, the plan proposed is, is a little bit, is, is a little bit unreasonable in terms of, of what the, what the significance could be to the neighborhood, and that's where I'm concerned about this. The history is what it is. I don't think that the character of the applicant has anything to do with this case, as it shouldn't. It's not a, it's not a, a reason to accept or deny a permit. It has nothing to do with it. I'm looking at the bylaw, and I'm looking at the plans, and I just don't get comfortable with, with how that matches up. So I don't know if any of the board members want to, you know, comment on that. Got way off base, but that's, that's where I stand on this.
Look, that, that was my question, why I was asking about the older home, how many bedrooms it was today, because I had understood it to be three, so the entire parcel was three. The number of bedrooms for that parcel was three, and I actually agree with Jeff that three to nine is what it, is what is being requested, and I feel that that is excessive and doesn't meet the bylaw. Because I do think it would impact the integrity of the character of the district. And it would be a cause of an excess of that particular use. That's my opinion. And, and with regard to the parking, if, if two spaces are the minimum required, two spaces per dwelling, I wouldn't exceed it. I, I, I understand it might spill people over to the street, but I think that that is also excessive.
So you guys think the use would be different if it turned into a nine-bedroom house?
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry.
Multifamily versus a nine-bedroom
That's like a boarding house, it's huge.
Well, it is huge, but that could be the end result, if there's no permit granted for a multifamily.
Oh, as far as, as far as the house goes?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's, that's right.
I don't think that's within our control. But, but to grant it is
You can't rent it out, you can't have people boarding there, so I mean, if you have, you know, six, seven kids and you want to live in there
Well, there are bylaws for boarding houses. We have a bylaw about
That's not what's been proposed.
Right, no, I understand that, but like, I don't think you could do that.
We can sit here and redesign this thing to death for the applicant, but that's not what we're here to do, you know?
No, 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 what I'm saying is
I'm just playing the devil's advocate and saying, what is it, what's the difference between a multifamily with nine bedrooms and a one big house with nine bedrooms?
Well, one big house with nine bedrooms, I would, I, I don't think that's our prerogative, but granting a multifamily that is potential of nine, two dwellings, nine bedrooms, up to twelve parking spaces, I think is extreme per Prospect Street.
Well, if that was proposed originally, would you feel comfortable, based on that neighborhood, going from a three-bedroom to a nine-bedroom home?
Especially with
He wouldn't be here, he'd have the right to do that if he wanted to, which is basically what he did anyway.
But to me, that
He didn't have the, he didn't have a special permit, you know, he built it saying he wanted to live in that, he needed a place to live. So he chose that route. That's why I want to know about the remediation and whether or not you just got the thing way back when, because it seemed like it would be, to me, a little less expensive to just, and I, you know, it got complicated, and I understand all of that. You know, you can do temporary housing, that wasn't
Right.
An option that he chose.
I think what Dave was saying is that if he came with this plan today, would, say it wasn't built, and said, "I want to build this," we would say, "No way."
Oh, a nine-bedroom home?
No, and, and in this configuration
Having six bedrooms
Or, or a two-family.
Right. In this configuration
I want to turn that unit, that, that three-family unit into a nine-bedroom.
But he can do that by right, he wouldn't be here.
Well, I don't, it depends if it, if it got past building, you know?
Is there any, is there any reason, John, why he wouldn't be able, I don't know why he wouldn't, as long as you got a septic, that can, that would be adequate?
The question is, can you convert a multi to a single?
No, if he had a three-bedroom home, can he convert it to a nine-bedroom home, provided that the, the plan is completely conforming in all respects? There's no reason why you
If it's conforming, yes, I can have this as a permit.
But to me, that is
That's, that's the choice.
That's different.
Of course it's different.
Well, but if he came with this plan today, and say he lived in this, the existing building that he's not living in now, and said, "I want to build a, a multifamily, and I'm going to build this one back here," we would never say that was okay. We'd say, "No, it's going to be more discreet, like the ones on the street."
With the total of four bedrooms for the entire multifamily, or something closer to that.
Or maybe six bedrooms. I, I don't know, I just, I think that that's, that's what I'm having the hardest time with. Like, we never would have said okay to this.
Yeah.
And now it's kind of being, like, I don't know if the right word is, I feel bad because you built it, but I, I, I think it's, I think it's, I don't think it's good for the neighborhood. I really don't.
Want to move on this, sir? You guys want to move on this, or are you ready to go? I mean, I don't know, I don't want to
Hope we make a motion. We make a motion. All right, make a motion.
Would the board consider restrictions on the number of
Do you need, um
Log on the permit sheet?
Yeah, just you want
As a reasonable condition?
Yeah. Jeff?
I think we have a
Oh, no. Doesn't he want that, Paul, does he want that? Is that what he's looking for?
I, I think he can come back and, and present something that's, that's going to restrict himself. I mean, I don't know how, in my opinion, we can, what, restrict bedrooms? We're going to have to restrict the septic, and, you know, we're going to have to sit here and figure out a plan that seems adequate. We're going to have to come up with parking and all that, but I just think in total, you know, given what's there now, and what it's capable of housing, and what the requested use is, I'm not so sure how we can sit here and start drafting
No, I'm not interested.
A bunch of conditions that, that get us to the point that, you know, we're going to redesign this thing. That's my personal opinion.
I think, I think what I would like, yeah, we're still in board discussion.
You've not made a motion.
Um, I think what I would like, if you were to come back, is to have one plan, a plot plan, showing your parking, showing exactly what is going to happen in this new house, showing exactly what is happening in this current house, whether it's a TV room or a bedroom. You need to let us know, everything like that. Because I don't know, I'm frustrated because I'm looking at twenty different things, and there's mistakes everywhere, but I need to know, like what Jeff said, what are you proposing? And a five and a four is just too much.
It's there, though. I mean, they could come back and say, "Okay, change this, change that, here's parking, I have," I mean, but
But if you're gutting, but if you're gutting this first house, I mean, they could, if they're gutting it, they can make it into a, a nice spacious three-bedroom
Five in the rear and whatever else is, yeah, I, you know, I don't know.
I mean, the restriction on the number of bedrooms could be accomplished any number of ways. There could be a deed restriction, there could be a restriction in the special permit. I mean, there are remedies to, to, to adequately meet the concerns regarding the character of the neighborhood, and those are certainly things that my client would be open to.
My, my opinion is, we vote on what's been presented, and if they come back with something substantially different down the road, you can do that within a two-year period and present something else.
else. Come up with his own design that limits and restricts himself to whatever it is he actually intends to do. Right now, the intention is five bedrooms in three. We can sit here and try to read four, excuse me, nine.
Four.
As long as they can substantially change what they're applying for, I would agree with that as well.
And they got to figure out how to do that, because they got a, right now, they got a structure that's capable of up to five bedrooms.
Limiting the septic is one way to do it.
They got a lot of work to do to convince somebody, may or may not be us, but whoever's here, that, you know, that's how it's going to be used, and it's going to be restricted that way, and the septic is probably going to have to be limited that way to get people comfortable that, you know, once you get, once you're in there, it's nothing to say you can't just bring more people, I mean, you know, what it comes down to is a sale, so the only thing that's going to restrict this down the road is a sale of the property. If you're advertising it as a nine-bedroom and it isn't, then you're going to be restricted based on that, that's the only thing that's going to...
Would the board give us the opportunity to submit those plans before you vote? We're trying to avoid, obviously, being forced into an appeal of your decision and of the time and expense incumbent upon that appeal. We'd be happy to try and meet your concerns to the extent that we're able to do so. Some of these concerns are new to us today and have been defined for us today that we didn't hear at the prior hearing.
If he could come back with a substantial change, even if this is denied, he could do that. You don't have to appeal, you can, if this is denied tonight, you can certainly appeal it, or you could just come back with a substantially different proposal.
Resubmit the application?
Sure. No?
Well, I mean, we'd like the opportunity to have you act on this application and meet the concerns of the board through modifying our existing plans, that seems a more efficient way to handle it than to resubmit a whole new application, to me.
Well, what we're talking about is making a decision based on the application that's in front of us without any other modifications that may be proposed or may not be down the future, I think that's basically where we're at.
I mean, the advantage of that is it would at least clear up what, it would clear out the history, it would sort of give us all a clean slate and look at what is now being proposed without distraction by other confusion or errors, whatever it was.
Yeah.
So, I'm inclined to think about, close and just start over, so everybody's clear on the same page.
I agree.
Although I do appreciate what you're saying.
Make a motion?
Sure, move that we grant applicant, grant a special permit for two-family dwelling, to Thomas and Lisa Simmons, for 36 Prospect Street.
You're granting it?
Motions have to be made.
No, they have to be made in the positive.
Oh, I'm kind of...
This board grant.
Sorry. That makes it confusing now, doesn't it?
Oh, yeah. If you don't know that.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to second that before you talk.
I clearly didn't make this motion.
Second and a vote.
Discussion. I have nothing else to say. Don't need to discuss it any further, just, it's so encumbering trying to figure this stuff out and not to mention, I believe that the board, if you would come before us with the plan you have right now and the original state, it just came to us with what you're asking for right now, we would deny it.
No, it wouldn't have helped it.
Anyway.
Well, we're still in board discussion for the, for the motion, and in particular, I'm uncomfortable with Section C of 16579 in particular, the potential detriment to the integrity and character of the neighborhood, given the intensity and the increase of the use. And that's, that's, that's all I'm really focused on right now. So, if there's any more discussion that you want to call for.
I don't think there's any further discussion, Dave?
I'm not real comfortable with A. No, I have no further discussion.
Okay. You go to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah? All those in favor?
No, you got to do a roll call.
Roll call.
You should...
Sharon?
No.
No. Gina, no?
Uh, no.
No.
And no for Paul. Thank you. Thank you. Consider our options.
Hold on, you got to read, close, motion to close. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. There is a 20-day appeal period, following 14 days, the clerk has to file a written decision with the town clerk, the person who exercises rights under an appealed special permit variance does so at risk. And I'd like to close this hearing. Yeah, we need, now we close the hearing.
Do that again.
Somebody like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Here we go.
Can we take a couple minutes?
Ask for recess?
Can we take a recess?
Take five?
Please. I'll give it a shot if someone will give it for me, and I think we're on air.
If you want me to read it, let me know.
Okay. Yeah, we already, we already read the legal notice.
For Thurlow?
Yeah.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we already opened that hearing.
That's right, too, we did.
Okay, we're on, folks.
Okay, we're on.
Yes, I don't have to, we don't need to make a motion, we can just reopen it, correct?
We never closed it, actually.
Never closed it, so you're going to just proceed.
We already know who the members of the board are.
You continued, so you are opening.
Applicant presentation. That would be you guys.
Good evening, I'm Nancy McManus, this is my daughter Kimberly.
Hi.
At the beginning of all this, Kimberly was meeting with everybody downtown, and I stayed home, and that was fine with me, but tonight, we're here together, and you all have a copy of the letter I wrote. I'm writing this letter to request your assistance. For the past year, Kimberly and I have been working with the office of the building inspector in order to enlarge our home at 118 Thurlow Street. We had our land surveyed, hired an architect and an engineer to design the building and create the necessary plans, and installed a new septic system. In May, we presented our final plans with all the necessary paperwork and signatures to the building inspector. He was shocked to discover a 1985 variance on the property. I was very shocked, we, that's when we found out also. It prevents us from changing the exterior of the house in any way. When we learned the news, we were stunned, I felt positively sick when I thought of all the time, effort, and money we had spent, only to learn at the last moment that all our efforts were in vain, as the variance was not disclosed by previous owners unless at the time we purchased the house in 1995, nor discovered by the town staff until this year. We're asking you to modify the variance because we would face enormous hardship if we have to move our family. My husband and I live in our three-bedroom house with my daughter, my son-in-law, and their two children, Alex, who is almost seven, and Bella, who just turned three. When my daughter moved with her family, it was early in July of 2010, it was with the idea they would stay for a short time before finding a home of their own. Unfortunately, in July of 2011, Kimberly was hospitalized for a week with peritonitis, so they extended their stay so she could recover and I could help with the children. In January, and the date is wrong, 2012, my husband suffered a stroke, which destroyed some of his memory and left him with a visual handicap to prevent him from driving. Later that same year, the teachers at Pearly School suggested Kimberly talk with her pediatrician about Alexandra's behavior. Several months and several doctors later, Alexandra received a diagnosis of PDDNOS, ADHD, sensory integration disorder with a mood disorder. This all falls within the, or most of it, within the autism spectrum. Therefore, it was not a complete surprise to receive a diagnosis for autism. For Bella, she has a global delay and the Pearly Special Education Team has created a sub-separate classroom in order to help her learn, communicate, so that she can hopefully be integrated into a general classroom in the, hopefully, near future. I provide daycare for the children since both Kim and Matt work outside the home. I also drive the children to and from school as well as their weekly therapy so that Kim and Matt do not have to take time from work. Kimberly works as a teacher at an extended day program in Lawrence, Mass, Matthew works in Reading at Kerrig. It would be impossible for them to hire someone who could manage both children, provide transportation, and communicate with numerous therapists and IEP teams at Pearly. The Georgetown school system takes phenomenal care of both children, and we are concerned that Bella especially would suffer serious regression if she had to move to another school. I'm also very concerned that moving my husband into a new home would be too stressful and traumatic for him. John already has difficulty with memory and moving to a new home would be detrimental. At this point in my life, I need my daughter and son-in-law here to help me, they in turn need my help with the children. We love Georgetown and our home on Thurlow Street. We've done our best to follow the rules and meet all the regulations, but now we need your help. Please modify the 1985 variance and give us a special building permit so that we can move forward in Georgetown. I have spoken... I have spoken to all of the neighbors, who are in visual distance of our home, and they have no objections, and I have, you probably already have a copy of a letter from Steve Pinto, and I also have one from the neighbor directly across the street.
Do you want a packet?
Um, which?
Yeah.
There's more than enough there.
Yes.
May I?
You may.
Oh, it's several copies. Oh, I understand.
I thought it was a packet.
I'm so sorry. I thought it was a correspondent. Sorry.
I just wanted to explain that I did meet with Kimberly very early on in this process, and multiple times, I spoke with her architect. And, you know, I feel horrible about this situation. I directed them this, you know, towards this addition, this design. Our files were lacking. We simply did not have the variance in our files. We looked both, initially when Kimberly was there, we looked both in our office files, as well as in the archives, and we just didn't have them, so.
How did, how did we find it? Patty found it somehow?
Yes.
When I saw the denial letter, I looked in my index card.
It was in the log.
It was in those old index cards that we use, go back to 1954.
Prehistoric.
Going forward, you know, Patty and I have had this discussion, and we're trying to work earlier and sooner together to try anything that, you know, to check these files, because obviously, some of our older files don't have any cross-arcontinability stuff in the building stuff. And, you know, I, we urge you and ask you to consider your request.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna read a couple correspondence here. I'm assuming this is the second correspondence, Patty? This is the other, I got two letters from neighbors?
Yeah, that's, that's new. That's the one she just passed up today.
Uh, May 24th, 2013, "To whom it may concern regarding the variance requested at, for 118 Thurlow Street for an addition on the house at that address. We are the sole contiguous neighbors of the McManus family, and have discussed this addition with them. We have no objection to the addition or its placement, and would agree that, and would agree that it be allowed to proceed. As I, as I will be traveling out of state and cannot attend the meeting, I repress this letter be entered as our comments regarding this zoning request. Best regard, Stephen Pinto." The second letter dated May 30th, 2013, "To whom it may concern, we received a letter from the zoning board regarding the application for a building permit for John and Nancy McManus, 118 Thurlow Street. As neighbors of John and Nancy, we hope you are able to grant their request. We wish them the best of luck getting this process completed soon. Thank you for your time. Susan Parker, Jeffrey and Jeffrey Barnes, 115 Thurlow Street."
Patty, should I mention these exhibits marked A through G?
We, at some point, we need to enter them into the record. You don't have to do it right now.
All right, we can do it later, okay. Jeff, could you be clear about what we're exactly doing here? We're basically voting to remove a variance?
Well, there's, there's a, there's a couple of things. We're not gonna remove the variance. What the request is, to remove the condition of the variance. The variance is dated, um...
Eighty-five?
April, oh, no, I'm sorry. Except, uh, 1985, anyway. Close enough. It's in front of you.
October 18th, 85.
October 18th, 85, thank you.
Eighty-five, nineteen, file number eighty-five, nineteen.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a, there's a, they were granted a variance, and I was a little bit unclear as to what the variance was actually for.
I did some research.
It looked like it was for construction on an undersized lot? Is that what it was for?
No.
It's right in your, come on.
Initial variance.
Okay, it's, um...
Side setback requirements, okay. So there was, this was for the initial construction?
For an undersized lot, as well as a variance for a side setback requirement.
Right, so this was for an addition?
Yeah.
At that time, yeah, okay.
And so the existing non-conforming structure at that time was three feet off of the lot line. So under the current bylaw, that addition wouldn't even require, require a variance today.
Yeah, based on, yeah, maybe it's worth backing up. I looked at this, and I said that the required lot is forty thousand square feet, which is one acre. This is an undersized lot. It's roughly three-quarters, thirty-one thousand square feet, so it's an undersized lot that does not have, doesn't meet the frontage requirements, is that right, John? It's supposed to be one-hundred-and-sixty feet. They've got a hundred and seven feet and a half, and the required setbacks are twenty feet on the sides. They're not, they're not meeting that. So, the non-conformities, I guess, would be the lot size, the frontage, and the side setbacks. Is that what, the existing non-conformity would be the side setback?
Yeah.
And they're looking to modify that.
So the...
The original, the original addition was constructed under this variance, which, among other things, included, granted the construction, but then restricted that absolutely nothing be added to the exterior of the building, which obviously limits any further construction. So we would have to find substance to remove that condition from the variance.
So can we...
And then, based on the discussion we already had, actually in our business meeting, we would, under current law, have to grant a special permit for the construction of the property. Not a couple of things, just to, just to sort of clarify this, not to, um... In your letter, John, I just wanna be kind of clear on one thing. You write in your denial for, I, I think, I think this, um, this plan, this application for the building permit, regardless of the variance, probably should have come here anyway. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and we've had that discussion.
Yeah, just to clarify, you know, because your denial says, oh, we're down to variance, and so you need to go to the zoning board to clear this up. And, and I know that there was some mis, this was going on when we were trying to figure out, sort of sort out all this stuff, right?
Right, yeah, exactly.
And so, we've since done that, our rules of procedure have changed, and I think we're sort of in the midst of changing them again, based on current state Supreme Court rulings that are being a little more delicate to the laws. So the laws are changing, and we're trying to keep up with them. But even still, he writes that the proposed eight-foot setback is allowed under 16594. The current structure is located approximately three feet from the side lot line. Proposal does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure. That may be in John's opinion, and I don't necessarily disagree with it, but I think that's for this board to make, and we sort of go through that in our, in our rules of procedure. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, so that it's clear that regardless of this variance, you probably would have been here anyway, but we would have one less thing to do. All right, so, I don't want you to talk all night, but, um, my, my opinion, as John just pointed out, I think that, I spent some time looking at this, and the substant, to substantiate removing the condition of variance, the fact that the laws have actually changed. We no longer requ, would require, this variance today would no longer actually be required. Had they, had they applied for the same permit then, now, you know, now, as it did then, it would not actually ever require a variance anyway. We don't want to remove it, because at that point, the interpretation of the board was that a variance was in fact required, and they granted it. Today, they want to make a modification, it doesn't require a variance, so we can substantiate the removal of the condition by virtue that variance is not required. Uh, excuse me, that the, yeah, that the variance itself was never required, and we will follow the current law procedures for modification of a single-family, pre-existing non-conforming structure, which requires a special permit.
Just so, I understand, the original variance request was for the side of the Pinto property? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that was where the original issue was, and why it came from there?
Got it. Thank you.
The opposite side, there's no butter, other than, it's conservation, right? Yeah, I was out there yesterday and kind of walked, walked around a bit.
Beavers and deer, a lot of beavers.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing on that side, which is, which is nice, other than conservation, which is, which is good.
And the turtles.
My, my personal interpretation on this, I don't know if there's any other specific questions for them, but as far as the procedurally, you know, we'll look at, you know, does this create another non-conformity, and does it intensify the existing non-conformity and all of that, under the special permit review process that we talked about?
Do we first have to make a motion on removing the, or whatever, updating the condition?
Yeah, at the time, we want to make motions on this, it would be remove this first.
You would do it all at once, you would move this first.
I would, no, I'd remove this first.
Okay.
And then somebody would move to grant a special permit, based on whatever the evidence is.
I feel ready to proceed on the first part.
We haven't even talked about the modification yet, so I don't know.
But don't we talk about, aren't we talking about removing the condition first? Is this all about the Gale versus Gloucester?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, you can do that, sure, I guess.
Based on the Gale versus Gloucester?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that okay? And then we resolve that, and then we...
By purely virtue of the fact that it's not, a variance would not be required today anyway.
Right. Can we, how do I say that? Or, I, I'm ready, I shouldn't speak for anybody else. No, it's fine. You start with the add, right?
Hang on, it's right here, but this is not quite...
That's a really rough...
Yeah, I know, I'm just gonna start with this, though, I think more...
Are you, uh... John, why in the world, have you ever heard that, that absolutely nothing to be added to the exterior of the building?
I've never seen that condition on a variance.
I would love to know what they, why they did that.
We, we did one, actually. There was another one that was pretty similar. Yeah, it was, um, well, it doesn't matter. It was a small, kind of wanted to fill in a corner, and it was, it was a variance that said basically this, and at the time, what he wanted to do also required a variance, and he was granted another variance. So one variance said you can't do anything else, and then the second, I don't know, were you here? I don't know if you guys remember, but basically, ended up with two variances every time. Moving the condition that...
Well, I didn't want to, I didn't want to overturn the Pinto side anymore, because the original structure was already three feet, and they extended it in the front direction at that three foot.
Yep, yep. Yep.
I'm not sure we want to know.
I'm just picturing the house and trying to figure out what was there that they extended that way, and it just, they must have taken something out, because there's nothing there.
My vision is, it was a very small building, because I think it originally was a big property, and it was like a farm. And someone told me the boys lived in a little house on that side of the road.
Oh, yeah, that's right, they told us that.
And then they built the house proper, on top of what the boy, and probably lived in the boys' section while they built the rest of the house. It's a weird house.
And they built it forward and sideways?
Yeah, that's what they would have had to do.
Okay.
See, I don't, I don't know about this.
Who knows?
Yeah. No building permits back then, huh? Struggling all night on this.
So we can, we need a finding that, sorry, just bear with us for a minute. Just go with that. Basically, we can, the decision can be written based on the, the agreement that the board found that, that the current law no longer requires a variance.
Okay, here I go, thank you.
For that change.
Okay, I make a motion to grant a modification to the October 18th, 1985.
Five.
I thought it said October 8th.
Uh, it is October 8th.
October 8th, nineteen...
It is the 8th, the sign of 15.
Well...
Now I can't find it.
I was reading it, just, you can just start over.
Because it's, you're going by the town clerk stamp?
Oh, is that why I'm...
October 18th, 1985.
You go by the time. Oh, okay, I understand, forgive me, let me try again. I make a motion to grant a modification to the October 18th, 1985, variance condition CBA file number eighty-five dash nineteen, to Nancy L. McManus of 118 Thurlow Street, Georgetown, Mass., in the RB District, and identified on the assessor's map, 12 Lot 71. Removing the condition that absolutely nothing be added to the exterior of the building. Is that it?
Right.
Seconded?
Second.
Okay, somebody seconded it.
Dave?
Discussion?
Discussion, yeah, I mean, as far as discussion goes, based on the fact that the current law would no longer require a variance for the proposed change, therefore, the variance can be modified, removing that condition.
More specifically referencing Gale versus Gloucester.
You were, you were low-talking.
Yeah, well, they heard me. Just for the record, because it'll have to be referenced in the decisions. That's all I have, I don't know if anybody else has a discussion.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
And that's based on the Gale versus Gloucester Supreme Court decision?
Uh, actually, not even that, based on the, even without that, removal of this, this would not require a variance, because it's an existing non-conforming, so.
On the pile.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is a variance, could that be roll call? Patty?
Oh. Roll call is actually just for executive session.
Oh, okay, all right. Aye.
Good enough.
Sorry, unanimous?
Not yet.
We're removing condition of variance now.
It's got part two on there.
The discussion is to grant a special permit?
Thanks.
Or a finding?
Okay.
Thought you had mentioned it could be a finding.
Well, we gotta talk about what they want to do, we haven't got to that yet.
Oh.
It's a water park.
That, that, do you want that, Jeff, Paul, can I ask a question? Do you want that headed as mod, just modification of variance?
Yeah.
In the decision part, to the decision.
Yeah, because that's what, yeah.
Yep, I'm just...
Uh, you know, honestly, I think it's worth a little bit of discussion here, because what's, what's happening is, you know, I was over there yesterday and took a look around. You've got, the house is non-conforming on the, the Pinto side, and the new addition is now going to be non-conforming on the conservation side, and so, you talked about the, you know, the situation you're in, but let's talk a little bit about the addition itself, I think. Can you just kind of explain what the addition consists of, and kind of why it needs to be, where it needs to be, and all of that?
First of all, Kimberly had a boy and a girl, and we only have three bedrooms, so we can't always keep the two children together in a room. So we really need a third, a fourth bedroom. So the solution is to expand the house laterally toward the stone wall, and create a two-car garage that fits our vehicles to the master bedroom suite over it. And the present garage will be turned into a game room, place for my husband to get away from everybody, and then a game room above that, so that everyone has some place they can sort of be private.
One of the things about the house that makes it wonderful is the living room. The second floor above is only two-thirds of the house, so it's lovely, it makes a beautiful room, but what that means is the current three bedrooms are actually open to the living room. So if my dad wants to go to bed at night at 7:30 or 8 o'clock, because he does tire easily, then the children are on lockdown.
Or we have to move them into the den.
Which is small, and, and the same thing happens, the reverse in the morning. My kids get up at the crack of God, and they're like, let's go! Let's play with the noisiest toy I own, and it's like, no, no, wait, just wait here.
Wake up Papa.
Don't wake up Papa. So that was why we wanted him to have a room where he could be quiet and still join in the family if he wanted to, and also, a place where the kids can play without keeping Papa awake, or waking him.
So, yeah, you're, you have a three, it's three bedrooms now, but you're enclosing those and, and adding a, so you're going to basically a fourth bedroom?
We're not enclosing them. That, none of that is, none of the current structure of the house will change.
There's a hall in front of all the bedrooms, so you come out the door of the bedroom, and there's a half-wall, and you can look down into the game room.
Oh, I see, yeah, I'm looking at the plan, I got you.
What we really want is there's a door in a bedroom with a door that we can control her access, because she has a GPS system on her, because she's a runner, and she escaped one day, and I had to call 911. And fortunately, one of our neighbors that we really don't even know, several houses down, found her in the woods, and she's free. I introduce to all the policemen in the town.
Randomly attacks them. Hi, look at her, she's cute. Randomly attacks them, "Hi, look at her, she's cute."
This is what she looks like, and I hope you never have to look for it.
Um, you had a question about the roof, I think, didn't you?
I, I was trying to understand, I'm not the best at reading plans, but...
I'll keep you company.
Okay, are you raising the roof on the pinto side of the house by five feet?
We're planning to, because...
You are?
This is New England, someone who's, we get a lot of snow and...
It's the slope of the roof.
It's the slope of the roof is changing it, we're not actually increasing the livable space.
Right, we're just changing the pitch, so the snow will follow up.
The height of the house therefore increases.
It will change, and, I'm trying to remember.
I think, oh, here it is. I think it means this is the existing roof here, and the roof comes here.
Yes, so, but I'm just trying to remember, I believe it's, it's five feet three inches.
Yeah, so, my question, when I saw, I, I drove by, and it appeared to me that your house sits naturally a little bit higher than your neighbor? Like, I was looking from the street end. And then I just wondered if they were aware of the, that the height of the roof is changing.
You can check with them, but I'm pretty sure they are, I mean, they've seen everything.
And the only reason I ask is on a, in a previous discussion, when an addition was created, it became apparent that it wasn't clear to the abutters that the roof was increasing, so I'm trying to be sensitive to, does every, is everyone understanding?
Their garage is also between the two houses.
Yes, that is true, but it's pretty close.
Look at their letter.
It doesn't say anything about the roof.
But I think in the last case, they were higher than the bylaw allowed.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not sure if that was what the concern...
But in this case, I mean, anything that they change, because it's nonconforming and we have to come to comfort that it's not more detrimental, then
Right.
these all kind of come into play regardless of whether it's, I mean, but it's, yeah.
I just was, it was just a question.
Presently, I've many, many years been on the roof on my knees dealing with ice ups and so forth.
I appreciate low-slope roofs, I have a major problem.
I'm getting too old for it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand the need to slope the roof, I just didn't know if they were clear.
I think that they do. I, I can't promise you that they do, but we've talked to them about it a lot. I think the only place where it would be sort of a concern for them if they did, if they sit on their back deck.
Yes.
They could swing around and look behind them and see that the roof was higher. But our houses are pretty much parallel.
Yes, they are.
So, if they're sitting on their deck, they're actually in what would be our backyard. So, it's not going to impede their view, they're still gonna have the same, it's gonna look the same to them unless they face that way.
Okay, okay, that was my question about...
Yeah, it just says in the letter, it says...
It's general, as I recall.
We have no objection to the addition or its placement, and would agree that it...
Which I kind of thought meant on the opposite side of the property, on the conservation side of the property, as opposed to that, that's what I interpreted that.
There's also objection to the addition, which there isn't any.
And this isn't either of that, this is about raising the roof.
Which, that's the addition.
It just doesn't mention the room.
I don't think.
Okay. That's kind of, no one else...
Is the...
Good point.
On that plan, the lower, on the section there, where the existing garage is now, there's that peak that's facing us, that, that's new, is that right, or is that existing?
That will be new.
The current, the current roof is a low slope over the present garage.
I was trying to figure out, yeah, it's not flat, but it's got a, yeah, all right. I was just wondering if you're matching what's here, but you gotta get a second floor up there at some point, so you're bringing the other, the other roof in to match the, the peak of the new second floor. Yeah.
That's exactly it, and that was why, why our architect made the suggestion of, in raising the roof all the way along. Because there was no nice engineering neat way to connect this one roof that has to be higher, because the second floors have to match all the way along. And this other lower roof, we were gonna end up with a half-wall there, and there were all sorts of interesting conversations about what we could do and how we could make it work. And then finally, they just said, we were trying to avoid putting a new roof on, because the roof is only ten years old. Why put a new roof on, it's not that old, but ultimately, it came to that would ultimately be our best choice.
And the cars will pull in this way, whereas before, they seemed to be parked on the side.
Before we came in, go to the left, right?
They loop around, yeah.
But then now it'll be straight shot in.
It'll be a straight shot in.
Okay, that was my only other question.
So, so this is conservation here, but you're, you're coming in straight, so it won't be any backing into...
No.
What, what do you think you'll do? Are you gonna go with a metal roof, or are you gonna go with the architectural shingles? Shingles?
Yeah, we're gonna go with shingles, I have metal roof, but I don't think we're gonna afford the metal roof.
The metal's an alternate, but, you know, you put a good thirty, a shingle up there, it's...
What's a metal roof cost?
Money.
They're pretty, though.
I mean, we have one in Maine, and it's nice. You don't have to worry about the snow.
Right.
No, but doing around here, they charge twice as much.
But it looks appropriate where it is, too.
But if we do a metal roof here, we probably won't be able to hire someone to paint and put carpeting down. So, if we go to the shingles, I might get carpeting in my daughter's bedroom, so that would be good.
Go with the shingles.
No, it does. You guys are right, I just don't want to shuffle.
That's the main thing.
Well, from a technical standpoint, I think the key is that the existing dwelling is nonconforming with respect to the side setback. The new proposed construction is also nonconforming with respect to the opposite side setback. I don't know if we want to get into the procedural part of stuff, or we want to talk more about specifics of the design? I mean, I'm on the chair, to move things along, I guess I, you know, my perspective is that this does, in fact, you know, increase the, intensify the existing nonconformity by virtue of the fact that it, it A, creates a similar nonconformity on the opposite side. And B, there's sort of more space that's being encroached within the setback than there is now. Just to make it clear, I don't think a finding here is appropriate, basically. I think this requires a special permit that the board find that the proposed change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity. That's my take on it, I don't know if anybody else's got an opinion on that, or you want to move, you know.
If you weren't increasing the intensity of the nonconformity, it would, a finding would be, would be fine.
I think we just have to make a finding that it's an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling. It is, yeah, the requested change is not increase the nonconforming nature of the, of the, you know, of the existing structure and, what else?
Not detrimental.
Yeah, by definition, it wouldn't be more detrimental, you don't have to go there, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, for the record, I don't think anybody can reasonably conclude that by building something on the opposite setback. To me, actually, I believe it, it creates a nonconformity entirely. By definition, it can't be less nonconforming, or, or, you know, yeah, can't be, I don't know if John agrees with me or not, but, I mean, the next time somebody comes and wants to do it, just, you know, I think it's fairly obvious. But that's, that's for us to determine, but that's, that's my take on it. So, I think we need to make a further determination about whether the proposed change, extension, or alteration will or will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. And if it's not substantially more detrimental, then substantiates the issuance of a special permit, along with the required findings for any special permit, which is one sixty-five, I lost my mind.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine, which everybody's familiar with, so, I don't know if anybody got any opinion on, on that. I think there, there has been a substantial amount of work done to, to make the addition look appropriate with the rest of the house. I think it fits, they've done a lot of architectural work to blend it all together. It's not, you know, sort of a contemporary, I think it's sort of a contemporary design, your house, if you consider contemporary, with, you know, a colonial addition stuck on the side of it that happens, you know, I mean, or a garage or something.
No, our architect is...
You've spent some time here to...
Inconsistent.
And...
She has ideas dripping out of her fingernails, she's amazing.
So, that's one thing, I think the fact that there isn't anybody on the opposite side is, is kind of nice, because you're not, you're not encroaching on somebody else's view. Your, your closest neighbor's on the complete opposite side, and you're not infringing on that setback at all, it's on the opposite side. So, the virtue of the fact that you've got, you know, open space there with no, no abutter on that side, you know, is worth noting. So, I'm, I'm happy with it, but I don't want to do all the talking.
I think my, my biggest challenge always is, how does it look? Does it look like two separate houses stuck together? And I think this is done really, really nicely.
Tell Ellen.
And people, I think...
Tell Ellen.
When it's built, no one's necessarily gonna know it was an addition, they may think it was always that way, and I appreciate that a lot.
We're actually fixing a few things in the process.
Well, you might as well. And I agree that, I mean, I guess the Commonwealth of Mass isn't technically the owner there, but there's no one...
Hang on.
Who's gonna say.
And the abutters notice went out to, it's actually, it's the Department of Fisheries and, and actually, I got a call from them, and they just wanted to know. They wanted more information, I sent it to them, and they were fine.
No further?
Nope.
But Steve would review it, because...
They would have to get a sign off from conservation when they...
They already have received one.
They already have.
They have?
They have.
Based on this?
Yes.
The increased nonconformity?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
We really tried hard to do it by the rules.
So, my, so if conservation didn't have an issue, my only, my only wonder was what I already stated about whether your, your neighbor knows that the roof line will be increased by five feet. But I'm okay.
Yeah, I was, I had an issue with that as well, just making the whole structure that much bigger, but I think there's a practical issue here that you're dealing with, for one thing. And secondly, I, I can now see why, why the roof line carried across, I think it's, your eye is gonna be less attracted to that. You're not gonna, whereas when it's two levels, it's gonna, it will look more like an addition was added to something else, so you...
Badly done addition.
Yeah, you're, you're sort of changing the facade around almost, not entirely, but you're changing it enough so that it's, seems like in one integrated structure now, which is fine. Yeah, I don't have any issues either. And, yeah, I can see granting this, I mean, not to, not to grant it, but I can, I understand now that they do need a special permit, because I do agree that they're increasing the conformity on that side.
I think it's an additional nonconformity.
Additional, not increasing, right.
The only thing, I have other, other thing I wanted to add, it was important to me to learn that you're driving straight into your garage. As, I was concerned about extending it and looping around as you currently do, so, provided that's the plan.
No, that's...
That's the plan, straight in was important to me, so...
The, the lower part, if I can, right here, this part right here, this is currently the garage. So, we're moving that in this way, and this, when construction takes place, at one point, there was a, a rather significant leak. So, pretty much that whole thing is going to be...
Gutted.
It's gonna have to be gutted. It's very much a disgusting garage. Doors and windows.
Excuse me, sorry, do you want to mark?
Yeah, would you like me to get those plans and mark them?
Actually, I can, I want to mark...
My set?
Yeah, can we mark your set? And I have the list right next to you, and we just need to read those into the record?
Yep.
So, there's a lot of different things.
I'm sorry, we're just working through the bylaw issue.
Okay, no, I understand, okay.
Do you want me to move on this?
Yes, I do, you ready?
Yeah, I think we are. Uh, then I, I moved at the board...
You're gonna put the exhibits first?
So, I don't need to label this, because you've got it already, uh...
Yeah, just, they need to be part of the open meeting, they need to be read into the record.
I'd like to, uh, mark these exhibits, submitted their plans, exhibit A, would you like the description of exhibit A briefly? Plot plan for one eighteen Thurlow?
Yes.
Yeah, exhibit B, sheets A one, A dash one through A dash five.
Divized four-two thirteen?
Yeah, if you, you want all that, that's fine, yeah. Exhibit C, sheet A six, dated one sixteen thirteen.
By E.N. Nass Associates.
Yep. Exhibit D, sheet L six, first floor reflected ceiling plan dated primary four-two thirteen. Exhibit E, sheet L two, why do you have a question mark there? You think you might not need that?
Yeah, I don't know if we need to have the...
You need the reflected ceiling plan dated, okay?
That's for John.
Uh, sheet S one, marked foundation plan and foundation elevations details dated four-two thirteen. And exhibit G, actually, it's not gonna be G, it's gonna be F, so we got exhibit F, sheets S two dash S five framing plans, F, uh, four-two thirteen.
Ready for me?
I am, sir, thank you.
I'm not sure if I'm ready, see if I can do this, I'm applying here. I move the board grant a new special permit to John E. and Nancy L. McManus of one eighteen Thurlow Street, Georgetown, Mass. For modification to a pre-existing nonconforming single or two-family structure prior to the issuance of a building permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and ten, and the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections nine, seventy-nine, eighty-four, eighty-nine, and ninety-four. I further move that this board find that although the requested use does intensify the existing nonconformities, that the use will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. I further move that the requested use, as required by the Georgetown Zoning Bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five, seventy-nine, is essential and desirable to the public convenience of welfare. The requested use will not overload any public water or other municipal systems, whereas to unduly subject any areas to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. It will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. And the use will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. End of motion.
Someone like to second that?
Second.
Discussion? Further discussion, I think that was well done, thank you.
Um, just, I guess, technical note, because I'm full of those tonight, I might as well throw another one out there.
Knew it was coming.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, being that this is a nonconforming lot in several respects, I think that, since John is here, we're kind of hashing some of this out. You know, they probably would be here, anyway. Even, even if this, even if the change was otherwise conforming, because it's, you, you have, you have an undersized lot and you have inadequate frontage, which requires a review by the permit granting authority, which in this case is us, so, anyway.
And five years ago, we might not have granted that.
Five years ago, I would, I would say for sure this would be a variance, based on the, the board's interpretation of the code. And since then, there have been some Supreme Court rulings that have clearly noted that that's no longer a requirement, so. They at least look at things, the so-called footprint rule, which was never actually a rule, it was just interpretation that people used, which was not necessarily accurate, so, anyway.
Thank you. Go to vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't, that's it? Let me, uh, here.
And one of the lapse permits, this...
Lapse of special permit, per Mass. General Law forty-eight, Section nine, special permits granted shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeals referred to in Section seventeen. If a substantial use thereof has not been sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date, except for good cause.
Huh?
What, it's very strangely written. I'm gonna repeat that. If a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, or in the case of permit for construction...
You have to start within two years.
If construction has not begun by such date, you've gotta rewrite that at some point.
If you don't start, you have to, you have to.
You got two here.
Refile.
I'm going to go shovel tonight.
Don't start until the appeal period is over.
Yeah, notify of a twenty-day appeal period. There will be a twenty-day appeal period followed, following fourteen days. The clerk has to file written decision with the town clerk. The person exercising rights under an appealed special permit variance does so at risk. Someone like to make a motion to close this hearing?
Now, does he have to read the lapse of the variance, too, because we modified the variance?
Can't hurt.
Furthermore.
I can hear the side of reading it out.
Lapse of variance permit.
I'm just doing what.
Per Mass General Law forty-eight, Section ten, if the rights authorized by a variance are not exercised within one year period of the date of grant of such variance, such rights shall, shall lapse, provided however that the permitting granting authority, in its discretion and upon written application by the grantee of such rights, may extend the time of exercise of such rights for a period not to exceed six months and provided further that the application for such extension is filed with such permit granting authority prior to the expiration of such, uh, such on year, one, on expiration of such on-year period.
So does that mean they really need to begin within a year? Because the variance is allowing.
Well, then we removed the condition, but if they were going, if this was a variance, they would have to.
The pencil whipped that thing into shape.
Commence within a year.
But because we removed that variance, it doesn't apply? Okay, so you have two years after the appeal period.
So as far as the construction, they have two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Need a motion to close?
I would love one.
Like to make a motion to close here?
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Someone like to make a, we closed the, yeah, business meeting already, so we're all set.
Yes.
No, we may have to stop bringing in coffee after nine.
All set, Chris?
Just kidding. I'm done.